Board of Appeal hearing for June twenty-
Recording in progress.
The City of Boston zoning board repeal hearing for June twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature this year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through June two thousand and twenty-seven. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform and is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen, and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Analysts are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person comments, the in-person meetings, comments, and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Ms. Turner.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Egan.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Your floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will begin with the approval of the hearing minutes. These minutes are from June third of this year. I'll make a motion that we, that, well, that the minutes are approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next, if, actually, we'll move on to the extension scheduled for nine thirty. There, um, are we them all in? They all seem reasonable for the circumstances that are requested. So I would suggest that we approve them. But we'll turn that, uh, we would, if there are any questions for Madam Chair, then we'll move on from there. First, we have case BOA one-six, one-one-six-three-eight-five-six with the address of eleven-seventy-five Dorchester Avenue. Next, we have case BOA one-two-zero-seven-six-two-one with the address of two-sixty-five Amory Street. Then we have case BOA one-two-zero-eight-six-zero-nine with the address of two-sixty-seven Amory Street. Next, we have case BOA one-one-three-five-six-nine-six with the address of eighty-five Horace Street. Then we have case BOA one, case BOA four-eight-six-one-five-two with the address of two-seventy Dorchester Avenue. Next, we have case BOA seven-two-five-two-two-four with the address of thirty-seven to forty-one Boden Street. Next, we have case BOA one-four-seven-two-three-eight-four with the address of three-thirty-C Street. And finally, we have case BOA seven-two-one-five-four-one with the address of one-fourteen Orleans Street. And those are the cases that are proposed for extensions as well.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I'll make a motion to grant the extensions as requested.
May I have a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we'll move on to the recommendation. Will the hearings skip from the subcommittee of June twelfth? They were all approved. I'll read through them, and then we'll take action after that. We begin with case BOA one-six-nine-three-seven-eight-two with the address of eleven Dorchester Street. It was approved. Case BOA one-six-nine-eight-nine-one-six with the address of thirty-three to thirty-nine Savin Hill Avenue, approved. Two companion cases, those being case BOA one-six-nine-seven-one-nine-seven with the address of two Summer Street. Along with that is case BOA one-six-nine-seven-five-zero-nine with the address of two R Summer Street, which were approved. Then we have case BOA one-seven-one-four-four-six-zero with the address of twenty-three Wetchmere Road, which was approved. And finally, we have case BOA one-seven-zero-six-five-nine-three with the address of eleven Bonner Street, which was approved with a proviso for, providing for a twelve-foot curb cut. And those were the recommendations from the last subcommittee.
May I have a motion? Motion to approve the recommendations from the subcommittee. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have a ground law conservation overlay district with G Card case scheduled for nine-thirty. This is for case BOA one-seven-one-nine-two-nine-five with the address of three-ninety-three to three-ninety-five Beacon Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
We have a raised hand here, hold on one second. Evan Thien, are you here to speak on this proposal? I sent a request, unmute you. Can you hear us? If you're speaking, can I hear you? I just made him a panelist. Looks like we can hear him. The applicant for three-ninety-three to three-ninety-five Beacon Street on. Can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Okay, I'm gonna suggest we keep going.
We'll return to that case later.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Next, we begin the hearing scheduled for nine-thirty a.m. With that, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the nine-thirty a.m. period. Hearing none. We'll begin with the first case, which is case BOA one-six-eight-four-five-four-eight-five-six with the address of one-fifty-one Hebron Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the cases for?
Yes. Good morning. My name is Bonnie Tan. Was JCBT architect. I'm representing my client, which is the owner of the property. He's looking to erect a new eight-unit apartment for rental at the one-fifty-one Hebron Street, currently a vacant land. The proposed three-story, we're seeking for rarians of minimum lot per dwelling, front yard, side yard, and rear yard setback, max floor area ratio, rear yard occupancy, and open space. The proposed will have one parking space, actually, three parking space total for eight apartments. Each apartment will be two-bed, two-bath, ranging from eight hundred to fifteen hundred square feet living area. It's, the drainage will be installed, possibly under the building or in the parking area. It's a three-story flat roof, which it will match the nearby triple-deckers with a more modern look. So we, one of the unit will be affordable, with seven of them being marketable rate that to meet the, the guideline for affordable. I believe that is what I have for presentation today.
Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, another question. I'm a little concerned about the parking configuration. Most of the frontage is dedicated to parking, and with those three vehicles backing out into the street, most likely, and kind of where that building comes closer to the frontage, if, you know, how the vehicles will be able to enter and exit safely and have clear sightlines. Have you thought of any other parking configurations, or how did it land on this?
Apologize. So one-fifty-one Hebron is at a dead-end street with, like, two buildings of multifamily residential there before us. So there's only one building at the end of the street. So we're not expecting a lot of traffic, vehicle traffic. So backing in and out is not an issue at all, 'cause it's at a dead-end street?
Thank you.
I mean, I would also add, Madam Chair, the front yard parking is not something we typically like to see either. Have you, is there a way to relocate that parking to the rear of the building, so you're not looking at, you know, parking spaces on the, on the main street?
We try, 'cause currently there are easements in the rear from Livermore, but it hasn't been worked out. If it's possible, we would love to come in from Livermore, but there isn't with the tight width of the building. There isn't really so much of a option unless we take out a unit and put them under.
Yeah, and what about usable open space? And, and, you know, you're also asking for pretty variances on setbacks as well. Just speak to sort of the density of the site and...
So open space requirement is three hundred square feet. So we're, we are providing two-fifty-five, which is shy of forty-five square feet per the zoning requirement in the area.
Thank you.
And setbacks?
Setback, we're, uh, front yard setback is required fifteen feet, so we have five. Side yard is ten-feet requirement with a five to six suite. One side is five and a half, the other side is six because of the, the irregular shape of the lot. And rear yard required thirty, which we have seven.
Yeah, I mean, more, I mean, we know the variances. More speak to why you designed a project that requires these variances. And if you could, if you looked at something with less density. 'Cause I, I, are you aware of the planning department's recommendation here?
Yes, we are aware. And the reason why we're proposing that eight-unit with high-density project is because we're trying to match what's adjacent to us. Currently, there's a, a really, actually, two, three buildings of really large multifamily on this street along Hebron. And they all have very tight density, no setback. Not much of parking, except one of them have quite a lot of paved parking lot at the corner of Hebron.
May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Matta Pan Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutis meeting held on February twenty-seventh. It was very lightly attended, where abutis voiced concerns for the area flooding and water runoff, as well as the size of the proposal and the number of units. Next, the proposal was presented to Greater Matta Pan Neighborhood Council on March third, where they voted in support of the proposal. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Okay? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, could I put a question out to Mr. Hampton, if he's here?
Mr. Hampton?
Yes, Madam Chair.
So I see the recommendation from planning, and I know it's always a balance of what can be addressed, you know, through designer view, or what should kind of be looked at more, you know, maybe starting over. But I just want to confirm that, that recommendation...
Yes, Ms. Weewell. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. As you saw in our recommendation, we're not opposed to use. Eight units is fine. It doesn't affect apartment buildings on the, the adjacent property. And to your point, Ms. Panado, I think about the parking entering from Livermore. I don't know that's possible, because they don't own the land, right? So I don't know if spaces behind the building are going to be possible. I don't know if spaces under the building is a realistic opportunity with a garage. But I think this, you know, the design of the building leaves a lot to be desired in terms of eliminating backyard, increasing open space, increasing units. Does it need to go back to the drawing board? I don't know. We're not at that point right now. I would suggest that because we do recommend approval that we have significant design review. It may need to come back to you for a board final webinar. Some changes were made, drastic changes are out there, I'd be into this. But we are in support of this project. I just think it needs to be a little TLC.
Thank you. And looking across this street, it does appear that all of these apartment buildings, for the most part, have what you'd call front yard parking. Any other questions from the board? I'm just... I'm sorry. Did I have a hand that raised? Did you want to go back to, is hand raised, so we're done with that? We just had a person raise their hand. I'm not sure if they're looking to give testimony. Did you want to go back to that, or? Yeah, it looks like that person tried to speak earlier, so we can do, take one hand away. Oh, thank you. Okay, Chair, you can unmute. Can you state your name and address and tell us if you're in support or opposition for the proposal?
Our names are Robert and Shirley Moore. Our address is one-six-four Hebron Street. And we are not in support. And the reason being, when, when I heard the architect speak about the runoff, this is a wetlands area, and the apartment buildings that are in existence each have, you know, a parking, a dedicated parking space. There are quite a few parking spaces there. But what the architect is proposing, she's saying it's a dead-end street. But to come into it, you have to come down Livermore Street. And there's a school at the end of the street, and the buses are constantly going through, the school buses. And the traffic is already congested. And people, once in a while, you see people parking on Livermore Street. So now you want to add more parking along there. It's dangerous enough as it is, and sometimes children are walking from the school. So you have to come to the area that you are proposing. The space that is being requested for this building is small. You can see maybe a three-family going there. But the, what this architect is proposing is huge in comparison to the space that is available. So it's going to be super congested. People are gonna be scrambling, where can I park, where can I park? The water level will have to rise up to accommodate all of this. And I don't, I'm not an architect, but it's just...
Thank you, ma'am.
Our...
Okay, would the architect like to respond briefly?
Uh, yes, we can work out to, uh, we work the parking inside, possibly create another extra parking space on the ground, and we obtain more open space, if that's possible.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPP review, special attention to increasing side backs and open space in relocating the parking spaces in the front yard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yep.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-seven-zero-two-nine-eight-four with the address of eighty-four Dale Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Hi, Owen, is that you? You can unmute yourself.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Okay, sorry, I'm, I'm using this new microphone. So the customer currently has a small cake. They have a small concrete landing in the front that they would like to remove and replace with a larger landing. Essentially, it would be, uh, right up here. Come on, three foot six for a mudroom, and then another four feet for a landing with about eight feet wide with a little roof over it. Kind of give the front of the house a little more character. It can give them more room for closets and all that stuff when they come in the house. On the rear of the house, they currently have a poorly built dish that's kind of sinking into the ground with an existing deck. They'd like to remove that and rebuild the, the dish in a little larger, five feet further back, and then replace the deck. And then beside that addition, they want to build a, a sunroom, which would also kind of incorporate closet space for the, the current office on the first floor, and then just create some more livable space for it. It's, it's very cramped currently.
Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Roselandale Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of a subcommittee flyout to a barbers with no community feedback or required neighborhood association, meaning the proposal was approved to move forward in the zoning process. We've received no community feedback at this time. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Ms. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Egan.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-nine-seven-seven-four-eight-five with the address of one-forty-eight Arlington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hello, I'm trying to change the occupancy from a two to a three family.
Can you state your name? Sorry, can you state your name and address for the record before you proceed?
Yes, my name is Caesar Rojas, one-forty-eight Arlington Street in Hyde Park.
Please proceed. Thank you.
Yes. I'm, I'm trying to change the occupancy from a two to a three family. This is an existing two-family. It was newly renovated in, in two thousand and twenty-four. I currently have enough space on the attic space on the third floor. We have two means of egress. I also have plenty of parking on the back for six cars. Right now, there's four, but we can add, if you keep scrolling down, you will see it all the way at the end. That's the existing structure. So here is the third floor. Wait, one, two, three, four, five, six. That's my proposal, to have six. We have plenty of green space around the house, grass, plenty of space in the back. The house next to us is about four families, but it happens to be they are on Hyde Park Avenue on Arlington Street. But where I'm rights, the houses is only for two families. And I don't have any other violation besides the, the zoning from, for, for, for three families.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the Board, for the record, my name is Jared B. Bembry. I am the Hyde Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting facilitated on April 17th. With only one Butters in attendance, no concerns were raised. Next, the proposal was presented to Hyde Park Central River Neighborhood Group, where they voted in support of the proposal and provided one letter of support. Thank you for your time. In the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to defer to the Board for their judgment.
Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second? Second. Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The vote's yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Next, we have case B O A 170 5566 with the address of 1690 to 1700 Hyde Park Avenue. This is an Article 80 case. And if the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Mr. Stunbridge, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is Dennis Quilty. I'm the project architect with an address of 28 State Street, representing the applicant before you this morning. Ownership is here represented by Breland and Mark Feeney and Michael Sheehan. We are represented as well by Eric Robinson of Rhodey Architects. And Mitch Fishman of All Mall House Consulting is on board as well. I'd like to just quickly run through the project before I turn it over to Mr. Robinson for the details on the plans. This is, as Mr. Stunbridge indicated, an Article 80 project. We were approved by the Planning Department Board on December 12th of 2024, under Article 80, having previously gone through the review process with the planning department, which consisted of I H E meetings, excuse me, two full meetings of the I H E, plus a site visit with the I H E. We interacted and met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association, having held two meetings with them, the second of which was considered by O N S to take the place of the Butters meeting. We met in addition with the Reedville Watch, the neighborhood group closest to the site, who were also involved in our site visit. We met with and went over the plans with District City Council Peppin, State Representative Rob Goncalvo, State Senator Rush. And we met with the abutting businesses. This is primarily a commercial zone, if you will. We met with the four nearby businesses, Duroma, Sousa. I can't even read my own handwriting. I'm sorry, but the four, four abutting businesses and stayed in touch with them as well. We are, I think we've gone through the process with cooperating with the two neighborhood groups, the elected officials, et cetera. It feels though we are here with a project that's fully supported in the, in the community. If I may introduce Mr. Robinson to go through the plans, and then we'd be happy to take any of your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Great to see everybody. If we could start on page 11, so I apologize, it's going to jump down. It'll be, oh, yeah, keep going, sorry. Keep going. About, sorry, 12. So, thank you. So what we're proposing is 115 residential units on a 30,000 square foot site on Hyde Park Ave. As you can see in the bottom right diagram, the location of this site is actually a peninsula away from a lot of the smaller scale residential areas adjacent to us, separated by two railroad lines on each edge and within a close proximity to the rebuild M B T A train station. There's also some additional development that's been approved in the area, as you can see in the bottom left, of varying heights, five and four stories, but there's also quite a bit of grade change. So when we first looked at this project, you can see in the upper diagram, we did look at making the project a six-story building. That then is actually carved away, and we're creating a publicly accessible pocket park on the front of the building of about 8,000 square feet. And then we're stepping down the massing to our adjacent building to our south at 1702. So we're really trying to set forth a good precedent for future development along Hyde Park Ave. If we can then jump to page three. Uh, mine's frozen.
What, what page do you want her to?
Oh, I'm sorry, page three. That, sorry, that page with the landscape one. So here's just the sort of a breakdown of how we're looking at the site on the upper right-hand corner. So we worked quite a bit with the B P D, B P T D on creating much more setback on Hyde, on Hyde Park Ave that creates a clear bike lane. So we're sort of initiating that moment on Hyde Park Ave as you move from south to north. We also worked with the community in the Butters to create a small vehicular drop-off area that is on Hyde Park Ave to allow for Uber drop-off on the street. So the streetscape was a large discussion point through the community. We think we really successfully were able to capture their concerns and address their concerns. You can see the, the pocket park in the middle anchored to the south by a community commercial space. And then by, to the north with our bike room, full loading off Hyde Park Ave, which was another consideration. And then we are providing 69 parking spaces below grade access on the northern part of the site. The units themselves have gone through some iterations throughout the process, which has been great. The community has been very involved in that. We were able to increase the number of three-bedroom units through the process, as well as increase the I D P units to 20, which is about 17 and a half percent. So all in all, this was a very great process with the community. They were very active and showed their concern for future development along Hyde Park Ave. And I think the development team has done a great job to work with them and address their issues through the process. We were also able to adjust the building to take away all of the setbacks violations. So the side and rear setbacks are in compliance, the front is in compliance. Our only two zoning requests are for height and F A R, which are remnants of the industrial district. And with that, I will answer any questions by the Board.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office is going to defer to the judgment of this Board. Some background information, the community process, this went through a Boston Planning-led community process involving public meeting as well as I H E meetings. As you heard from the applicant's representation, they met with the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association. We understand that the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association is ultimately in opposition to this proposal, citing concern about this area that is mostly industrial, changing into a more residential component, with concerns about parking as well as pickup drop-off. As you heard from the applicant, during their lengthy community process engaging with stakeholders, they made some changes to the project, including that pickup drop-off area that goes onto the property, as well as changing the height and the setbacks as well. With that information, we defer to the Board. Thank you.
Mr. Newman, quick question. What, what was the concern about parking? Too little, too much, or something else?
Too little, from what I understand. They're worried about a potential impact on surrounding businesses.
Okay, thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A 170 9403 with the address of 53 Cedar Grove Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Good morning, Chair. Gavin Driscoll, White House Architecture and Design, 180 Allen Street, Brentwood, Mass. This is just a renovation of an existing single-family home. The second floor currently has two small bedrooms, so the project would be ripping off that second floor and then adding a second floor with the full height and then matching the existing roof that's there now on the third floor with some dormers. The violations are F A R and then front yard and side yard, which are both currently existing. We're not changing the part of the building, we're just going up. If there's any questions, I can, I can take those.
Okay, are there questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is Emma Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 53 Cedar Grove Street, our office differs to the Board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including at a Butters meeting held on Thursday, March 27, 2025, and was not attended by any community members. The applicant was also connected and met with the Cedar Grove Civic Association, which has expressed no concerns regarding the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the Board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Liam Reynolds from Council Consular's office. Our office would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A 169 4232 with the address of 10 Westerly Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the Board?
Go ahead, Nicholas, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Best. I'm the owner of 10 Westerly Street. My G C, Joel Harper, is on the line also. So the plan is to take the roof off and make a flat roof to increase the living space on the third floor. It should be, I think, slide six, page six. The issues, the zoning issues are the setbacks from the rear side in front of the building. We don't have enough space. But there are currently, I think, two other houses with flat roofs on Westerly Street. And then the surrounding neighborhood, there's probably at least 50% of the houses on the next two streets have the three families with flat roofs. As part of that conversion, we're also planning to add a sprinkler system.
Quick question. The setback, the insufficient setbacks, those are pre-existing conditions. Are you making them worse, or are they the same?
I think they're pre-existing, other than the roof line on the third floor. I'm not, I'm not increasing the outer, outer space of the building. It's just the roof line.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, for the record, my name is Jared B. Bembry. I'm the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting facilitated on April 14th, that was very lightly attended with two guests, no concerns were raised. Next, the proposal was presented to Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council on May 7th, where they voted to approve the proposal. To date, we have not received any community feedback in the form of opposition or support letters. Thank you for your time. In the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, we'd like to defer to the Board for their judgment.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Second, Mr. Stunbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A 170 3780 with the address of 190 L Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stunbridge. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maransi, business address of 168 Eighth Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner, Scott Schneider, and as well as the project architect, Gavin Driscoll. The proposal in front of us today is seeking to change the occupancy from a three-family to a four-family by legalizing an existing basement unit. By way of history, Mr. Schneider recently purchased this piece of property, and what he thought he was purchasing was a, an existing four-family structure, but discovered during his due diligence period that the basement unit was, was not legal. He is here now taking the proper steps of legalizing this unit. Further, he will be taking additional safety measures and adding a sprinkler system to the unit itself. This is a proposal that is very closely aligned with the city's by-right conversion of internal spaces to accessory dwelling units, except that this one is investor-owned. The footprint of the building will remain the same. Parcel falls within an M F R sub-district. Basement unit will be approximately a 792 square foot, one-bedroom with seven-foot ceilings. The floor-to-grade is approximately four feet. We have violations for a floor-to-air ratio. A required F A R is a 2.0, and the proposal calls for a 2.4. We have an open space insufficiency. 800 square feet of open space is required, and the proposal calls for a total of 429 square feet. Additional lot area is insufficient. We would need an additional 1,000 square feet of lot size, but this is a pre-existing condition of the lot. We do have an off-street parking insufficiency, as the code requires 1.5 parking spaces per new unit of housing, and the proposal doesn't provide any parking. In concluding, we feel that this proposal would not create any adverse impacts to the neighborhood. At this point in time, Madam Chair, I'm going to pass it over to the Board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Is the, is the basement level currently occupied?
No, it's, it's actually unoccupied during the due diligence period. He did too much as far as liability, so he put it on the seller to deliver that unit as unoccupied prior to closing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and Board members, good morning. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the O N S community process. Our office hosted an Butters meeting on April 17th, at which no opposition was expressed. The City Point Neighborhood Association is aware of this application and chose to take no position on the proposal. With that background, we defer judgment to the Board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Laura Tulladano here for Council of Plains' office. At this time, he would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. I'm sorry, the hand just moved. Were you looking to give testimony here? She lowered her hand. She, we all said.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
No, she knows. She doesn't have to do anything at all.
Second.
At some point.
Can you mute? Thank you. Mr. Stunbridge? Mr. Stunbridge? Did we lose you your mute?
Sorry about that. Sorry about that, Madam Chair. Yes.
You were the wrong person to be muted, Mr. Stunbridge.
Thank you.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner? Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A 170 3095 with the address of 96 Chamber Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they? If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Okay, if you're on to this applicant, sorry, this proposal, can you raise your hand? Okay, oh, Chris, I see ya. Can you raise your hand if you're on to this proposal? Okay, Chris, I'm gonna send a request to unmute you. Go ahead.
Here we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you very much for this time today. My name is Christopher Barry. I'm the ArchSec representing 96 Chandler Street. And our proposal is for a roof deck. And our one zoning issue is the roof slope is greater than 5%, and that's what triggered this review. We've been through a Landmarks procedure, we've been through a community procedure, and today we're seeking final approval for the roof deck.
Questions from the board? Can you just show us, to make sure that it's set back properly, et cetera?
Yeah.
Not visible from the street?
Yeah, if you can scroll to the roof plan, keep scrolling a little bit. There we go, stop. You go up a little bit. Up a little bit.
Next, yeah, previous page.
Yeah, previous page. There, you stop right there. So, in the lower right-hand corner, we have a roof deck. And the rear setback is within compliance. I believe the rear setback is five feet, and we're six foot six. The front setback is over 20 feet, and there are zero setbacks on the sides, although we are setback on the sides a bit as well.
All right, thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. How much higher, just quick, how much higher is the roof deck than the original roofline and adjacent buildings?
We are within the code allowance at one foot above the peak of the roof.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may we have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 96 Chandler Street, our office differs to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including at a butters meeting held on Tuesday, April 29, 2025. It was lightly attended with minimal feedback. Additionally, we received one letter expressing support for the proposal with no concerns expressed, and they supported their neighbors. The applicant was also connected to the Ellis Neighborhood Association and has expressed no concerns regarding the proposal and did not choose to meet with the applicant. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura Toldano here again for Counselor Flee's office. He would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve with Landmarks Commission's review.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Give up.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we have case BOA 1678910 with the address of 16 Bond Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I represent the owner of this property, which is a single-family home, Jeremy Jacobs. And also with us today is the architect, Mark Van Brocklin of M Bark. This is an amendment to an existing permit for ongoing renovations at this single-family residence, which is owner-occupied. The amendment concerns certain aspects, namely the replacement of the existing roof deck to make it far more compliant with Southern Landmark guidelines than the previously existing was, creation of a small dormer on the roof ridge to access the roof deck, and installation of groundwater recharge system. There are three items cited on the zoning code refusal letter. One is a conditional use permit for installation of the groundwater recharge system, and we have submitted our BWSC compliance letter, as well as our no-harm letter from the engineer. Second item cited by the examiner, which I believe is in error and relief is not required, we were cited for use conditional. Of course, this is a single-family dwelling existing, has always been a single-family dwelling, will remain a single-family dwelling in a multifamily residential sub-district, so the use is, in fact, not conditional, but it is allowed use. So, I would note that although cited for a use violation, there is no use violation present. Now, the third item is a conditional use permit for the roof structure, namely the small dormer that's being added to access the existing roof deck, which is being repaired and replaced. And that is under Article 64, Section 34, which requires a conditional use permit for any additions to the roofline. Our Boston Planning Department memo recommends approval with two provisos, namely that we achieve approval of the groundwater recharge system, which we have, and that the plans be submitted to Southern Landmarks District Commission for approval of any exterior changes. And I'll note that the architect has submitted three applications to the Southern Landmarks Commission, all of which were deemed reviewable pursuant to their administrative procedures. And we received three certificates of design approval for the administrative approvals by the Landmarks Commission for the roof deck replacement and reduction, if you will. Those railings that you see there at the side of the building are being replaced and made compliant with Southern Landmark guidelines. The dormer was approved, and other exterior modifications or repairs have also been approved. So, fully approved by BWSC, fully approved by Landmarks Commission, and see the two conditional use permits and the notation that the conditional use for single-family use is not required. With that, I will pause to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones. I represent the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 16 Bond Street, our office differs to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including at a butters meeting on Monday, March 24th, 2025, which was attended by about four community members. The feedback from this meeting was some concerns about communication with the applicant during construction, the historical integrity of the building and the neighborhood, concerns about the size of the decks on the property, and lastly, damage to the neighborhood's sidewalk by the construction. There were two civic associations that were involved in this proposal. Bradford Neighborhood Association, as well as Eighth Streets, attended the abutters meeting, and they provided no significant concerns following the abutters meeting. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, Counselor Flee would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Semenelli.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. Christian Semenelli of Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, may I have a motion? We do have another raised hand here. I apologize. Oh, so sorry. GSA? Okay, I sent a request to unmute you. All right, GSA, you looking to give testimony? Yep. Can you name an address?
Yes, good morning. My name is Gail Simoto and John Maloof. We live at 80 Bond Street. We are abutters to this project. We just wanted to say that, one, it's unfortunate for the owner and the applicant to have, do this process so late in this project, because he's almost done the building, and we felt it's a little bit unfair for him to have to go through this. We just have two quick comments. At the abutters meeting, we brought up the fact that their subcontractor had damaged the stairs in the alleyway, and the subcontractor refused to repair them. We called the architect the next day, and he did not want to assist us with this and told us we should contact the city, which we did, and we contacted Eva Jones, and she suggested that we bring this up at the Board of Appeal hearing. We don't really believe that this is the appropriate form for that, but that's what we were directed to do for the city. And the second comment has to do with the deck on the first level. It appears that the size of it is not really in dispute, but at the abutters meeting, we were told that it is replacement of an existing deck. And what was there previously was a landing to a staircase, which was much lower than this deck and did not have access in from the home. And so, we believe it is a new deck. It is not the addition, replacement of an existing deck. This would be akin to, you know, calling a fire balcony an existing deck or an existing balcony, but that said, and other than that, we're supporting the project.
I'm sorry, that being said, what?
Other than that, we are in, we object to sort of how the process has gone through. We don't know what to do.
Okay, understood. So, Mr. Lacass, I think the issue with the stair probably is the best one to start with?
Yeah, so, number one is that there's no citation in the zoning code refusal letter for the rear deck. Article 64, Section 9 applies the conditional use standard for rear decks which are above the first story. This is at the first story, so there's no citation for the rear deck, and it's otherwise compliant, because there are no violations cited in the refusal letter. As for the process, as I stated, this is an amendment to the prior permit, which permitted most of the work at this property to proceed as a right without the need for any zoning relief. These couple of items are just add-ons pursuant to the amendment permit, so that's why it's quoted so late in the process, and there's nothing unusual about that.
I'm sorry, so can you address her concern about potential property damage?
Oh, yes, and I will certainly confront my client and address any side of our issues. We have not been cited by any public authority for that, but we understand that a concern has been raised, and we will certainly look into it and make necessary repairs.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Why is G-Cod coming up at this point after you're under construction?
Because with the addition of the amendment work, we exceeded the threshold for true G-Cod, which is 50% of the assessed value of the building. So, then it was cited, and then it was designed and installed and approved by BWSC.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not necessarily triggered until you cross the threshold of 50% of the assessed value of the building when you're doing a substantial rehabilitation of a property.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Give up.
Thank you kindly.
Next, we have case BOA 1691757 with the address of 75 Harrison Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, good morning, everyone. My name is Jamie Chan. I am, is it possible to scroll down to the second page? Thank you so much. Thank you. My name is Jamie Chan. I am representing Kuya LLC, the applicant for this project. We are proposing a change of occupancy at 75 Harrison Avenue from retail to a small restaurant with a takeout component. This shop will be takeout only with no seating. There will be a small prep area and pickup counter in the front, another prep space in the back, and an employee-only restroom. We plan to be open from 11:00 a.m. to 9:30 p.m., serving customers throughout the day into the evening. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May we have public testimony?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 75 Harrison Ave, our office differs to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including at a butters meeting held on Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, that was not attended by any constituents. The meeting, or the feedback from this, oh, excuse me. The proposal was also reviewed by the Chinatown Residents Association at their meeting on 5/7/25. The association expressed non-opposition, but has expressed some concerns about the proposal, including the increasing number of bubble tea shops in the area and the amount of litter generated by these proposals, as well as the increase in pedestrian traffic taking up space on the sidewalk. CRA has provided a letter of non-opposition on this proposal, and at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, Counselor Flee would like to go on record and support. Thank you for your time.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion not approved.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Panato?
Yes.
Ms. Aiken? Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Give up.
Next, we have case BOA 1690949 with the address of 163 Falcon Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the owner, Matt Schuster, and I also have David Choi, who's the architect for the proposal. Pretty straightforward. This is a proposal to change the occupancy of an existing three-unit building in the Eagle Hills section of East Boston at 163 Falcon Street by adding one additional unit, converting basement space into a new unit. My client felt, given the city's position on many of these basements, which they're saying in the future may not even require zoning relief, it was the ability to create an additional dwelling unit by keeping all the rest of the building exactly the same, so we're not adding anything in height, in rear yard setback or side setback. We met all of the code, except two areas, off-street parking, obviously. We're keeping the building, so there was no ability to create parking, although we're very close to the tea stations in the immediate area and in use. If you look at this building, the reason we were asking for it, if you see, it's unique in the position, that's an elevated three-story, and it's about 60% above grade in the basement. At some point prior to my client purchasing the building, it was being used for housing in the basement, not legalized, but there was kitchen area. He took that out to keep it as a clean slate. It has its own entrance already existing on the front of the building. It would have a separate utility area. It would, we're proposing a one-bedroom, one-bathroom unit at about 715 square feet with a separate utility room entrance. As I had mentioned, it's already really built for, as you can see, based in the elevation. It's surrounded by a mix of housing stock. There are a number of four-unit, three-unit, and then six-unit or more buildings within this particular area. Everywhere else, under the new code, we met all of the requirements. The other units in the building would remain exactly the same, as we're not building out. We worked with the Eagle Hills Civic Association and the neighbors. We had strong support across the board. They actually appreciated the fact, given a lot of the zoning changes, that we were not asking to build out or up or change the contours, but try to work within the existing structure of the building to create additional housing opportunities. We also, as part of our work with them, agreed to completely renovate the exterior of the building as well, so that, we already started doing that. And also, to create, to plant a street tree, just to add some more trees to this particular section of Eagle Hill as well. There would be fully sprinkled, so the building would become safer. We would install egress windows as well, and a separate utility room in that basement level. It has seven-foot-six-inch ceilings existing across the board. And so, with that, I can pause and answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, just to understand the zoning a little bit more, if Mr. Hampton could address the information given to us in our materials, that the relationship between the number of units allowed is proportional to the frontage. Is that right?
That's correct, Ms. Weewell. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. Uh, the new East Boston zoning in the EBR three does allow for more than a three-family. It allows a four-family. However, uh, it allows these additional dwelling units if the lot frontage is a minimum of fifty-five feet, which this lot is not. It's only twenty-five feet. Um, we weren't opposed to the, the parking variance, uh, because as you can see on the site, you just can't do it. Um, but because this zoning is, you know, just over a year old, uh, the conversion from three to a four, and because the lot is less than fifty-five feet, that's why we have a recommendation of denial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding one-sixty-three Falcon Street. Our office defers to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a butters meeting held on Wednesday, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five, which was not attended by any constituents. The proposal was also reviewed by the Eagle Hills Civic Association at their meeting in May. The association did not provide any feedback on this proposal, but at this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
If I could just add, Madam Chair, one, one point. So the Eagle Hills Civic Association did submit a letter to the board in full support, and I have a copy of that letter as well.
Thank you. We're still doing public testimony? As we're, yeah? Yep, oh, go ahead, Gabrielle.
Governor, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Gabrielle Ramirez here, present on councilor. Hello, staff at this office. The councilor would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, and David Choi, are you looking to get testimony here?
He's, he's with Harvard.
He's with, he's with you, okay. Yep, we have no additional raised hands. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, may I ask a question first?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Ham, Mr. Hampton, if Mr. Hampton could come back online for a moment, um, to just talk a little bit about the relationship of the twenty-five, the fifty-five foot with adding units, you know? There are blocks like this that have, you know, significant number of buildings that might be eligible for this type of piece. So it'd be just helpful here a little bit more about the context of that relationship of the lot with, and this unit. I don't remember, uh, that from the planning process.
Uh, yeah, that's, it's actually, when you look at the zoning for East Boston, it's actually a footnote, Mr. Aiken. So it's one of those, if you look at the use item table, and I know, uh, Mr. Drago will back me up on this. It'll say that it's an allowed use, but it's one of those footnotes that says it's allowed if. So I think that. I, I can't really go into detail on the planning process of this because I was not involved. I was involved on the zoning side. I'm not sure why. I don't know if Mr. Drago has any insight to that. But i- if you were to look at the zoning now, you, you would see that it's an allowed use. And I know, I think it was caught kind of at the last minute because there are a couple of versions of our refusal letter that were out there that didn't have it as a forbidden use, and that it did, uh, one of the last ones. And I think it's because, you know, that footnote was overlooked during the review process.
Yeah, and, and I can weigh in. Thanks, Jeff. Um, so just during the process, I think everyone was looking more at creating additional units, either taking a building down and building four to six units or eight units. So new construction or an empty lots is where everyone was looking at where this applied. I think with adding existing, when you have an existing building and just adding a unit, nobody was thinking, you know, a basement space or something because the community really was more concerned about new development, tearing down buildings and, and so forth. And I think that's why, even though there is a footnote, so much of the community was relieved to see us coming forward for just adding one additional unit in a space that almost looks like it belongs there because it's an elevated building. Um, but yes, the footnote is there, I think. But we've also seen both the B-PDA and the community saying, why aren't you coming out to us rather than tearing buildings down and trying to jam more units in, um, new units? Or, you know, double lots with eight units? Why don't you try to work within the existing structure of the building to create additional units? And I've seen that time and time again on the recommendations. So that was our thought process, and we really did have full support for it. And in this block, there are sixes, fours up and down this corridor as well. Most of them new buildings, but many of them just using additional space.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I have to, uh, close out by making a, a motion, uh, to approve. I think that's a, uh, suitable use here. I do get concerned sometimes about the lack of, uh, you know, storage space or other things in the basement, but this is a very good fit here, and it's also telling, I think, to hear that the local civic associations and, uh, councilors support, uh, uh, this type of change, uh, under the, under the zoning code. Uh, so I'll move forward with approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, before we leave the nine-thirty cases, is, uh, there to be groundwater concentration overlay district case?
That's right, yep.
So if anyone is present for three, three-ninety-three to three-ninety-five Beacon Street? Hearing done. No response.
There's a raise from here. Um, Catherine? I'm sorry, there's two raised hands here, and then also a number on the phone, sending a request to unmute you on the caller, six-four-six. If you press star and three, you can unmute yourself. And then Catherine, if you, if you are also one for this. Well, we're here for them. The applicant, so you can stop. Are you the applicant?
Catherine Kia, Nafios, yes.
You're the applicant? Okay, can you please proceed?
Pick a blend, let me tell you.
Yes, we have.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Stembridge, please.
I'm so.
Hold on, hold on, man, hold on. Mr. Stembridge needs to record it into the record.
That, this is for case BOA one-seven-one-nine-two-nine-five, with the address of three-ninety-three to three-ninety-five Beacon Street. Thank you, and go, go, please identify yourself, go ahead.
Hi, Evelyn Kia Nafios, project manager for three-ninety-three, three-ninety-five Beacon Street. And my apologies, I, I'm not sure, because I'm on the Zoom video call, but I can't hear anyone. I can see everyone, and I have, I'm also called in on my cell phone, so I can hear everyone and follow along on the Zoom video. So I'm not quite sure what, why I'm not able to actually, and I've checked the, the, um, sound on my computer. I've tested it, so I, I'm not sure why I can't hear anyone on my computer.
Are you able to proceed?
Can you hear me now?
Ma'am, are you able to proceed? We can hear you.
Yes.
Oh, please proceed.
Okay, so we just have, um, a violation for the Article thirty-two, uh, for compliance, the groundwater. And, um, we provided, uh, which, uh, you should have received, uh, the letter from the principal engineer, Peter Dammie, um, from Columbia Design Group. And, um, basically, the whole no-harm letter for three-ninety-three, um, Beacon Street for the Boston Water, um, and Sewer Commission regarding our project, which, um, we have, um, it was two lots. It was, um, two lots into one, um, and renovation of the existing building to accommodate four units with the low-grade parking of six cases. Uh, the existing sewer services are to remain the same. The new domestic water and fire services are proposed, as well as a stormwater installation system to be located under the driveway. Um, the storm drainage system, uh, complies with Article thirty-two. And, um, and there's also an elevator at the bottom, um, with also a sub-pump. And plans were approved by Boston Water and Sewer Commission. And that is site plan number two-two-four-seven-four. And there's also a letter from Boston that has been provided to the DPA for, um, the, um, from the site plan review engineer, um, that notes that Article thirty-two, um, for groundwater and storage recharge, uh, is in compliance. And, um, and there's no, um, there's no overflow, um, issues in that it meets, um, the site plan meets the requirements set forth in the groundwater overlay district requirement.
Thank you. Is Mr. Semenelli with us?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Christian Semenelli, Boston Water Trust, and we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? May we have public testimony? We have a raised hand, a couple of raised hands. Um, Cindy, are you looking to get testimony here?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm concerned because.
I'll give you your name and address for the recording.
Uh, Cindy Joyce, I'm a neighbor of three-ninety-three, three-ninety-five and three-eighty-nine Beacon Street. I'm worried about the fact that they've already dug out the garage. It's been this way for two, over two years. And in fact, there's a red flag or a red tag that they're not supposed to be doing work. And two weeks ago, there were people doing work in the building for a day. Um, so it seems a bit shoddy, and it seems that we're now looking for permits for work that's already been completed or started.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Catherine, are you looking to get testimony here?
So, hello?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, so I, I second, uh, Cindy Joyce's comments. I live directly next door at three-ninety-one Beacon. This work has been ongoing for like two and a half years. Um, and the approval seems to be looking for approval for work that was started and has been ongoing and now abandoned for at least the past year.
Thank you. Okay, uh, can the applicant briefly respond?
Yes, of course. Um, actually, these site plans, uh, and approvals from Boston Water and Sewer Commission, um, was all completed on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we had this, um, actually on the, uh, as a violation in order to just prove that we were in, uh, compliance and also that we are within their requirements of the groundwater overlay district. And, um, so this is not something that we're recently doing. This is something that we're addressing, um, now, uh, to the zoning board of appeal. So, um, this is not something that, um, we're, again, that we're doing now. This is something that was approved in, uh, back in, um, at, back at the beginning of our project. Um, and you notice, uh, letters from, uh, a letter from Boston Water and Sewer Commission is actually dated June twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, when that site plan, um, review engineer, uh, Louis Blora,
Thank you.
um, when it was approved and the letter was issued. So it was submitted way prior to that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing done, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. And with that, I will see you all at eleven.
Thank you.
Their concept design and how we responded to that. It's not necessarily finished, but at least we have a kind of a concept for what is being planned next. And just very quickly, just kind of want to give you some insight into the thinking. I mean, this is the context I pointed out to, to the sort of south of the slide, at the first slide, which really shows that context. Gabled, gabled two, two to three story buildings, different variations. There was a color and vertically oriented punched windows, clavering siding, little front yards in front of entries. I mean, this is kind of the, the character of that, of that, that residential, sort of the residential part of the, of the site. Next. And this is aerial overview with that concept for the park, sort of intact, and reflecting three buildings which sort of make up our forty-three units, our, our development. You can sort of see a little courtyard between, between the three buildings. That's, I'll show you that in a second. But basically, our, our, our project is really comprised of three buildings, which as you'll see in elevations, is kind of further broken down to appear more like individual blocks which have somehow been linked together. Really trying to look at the kind of smaller scale context that you see on the left of the page. Next. This is civil plan, probably is not as useful as the next plan. Next. This is the ground floor plan in context, which shows sort of to the top of the plan, sort of bigger building which has community room, lobby, mailroom, so forth and so on, bike storage, some of the, the, the uses for the entire development. And to the south are two different buildings which are linked together by parking, which has a lattice over the top of it. A key concept was really to make it so that parking, whatever parking that we would provide would not be visible to neighbors as, as well as residents. And I'll show you how we sort of accomplish that. And really that courtyard in between the three buildings is a resident courtyard. And then you can sort of see that line, that axis, which then connects through the building, through the lobby, and then creates a pathway to a public park to the north and towards Harvard. Uh, next. And then up the floor plan, just kind of showing the kind of distribution of units. One can look at that later if, if you have interest, but really trying to show kind of how the units are distributed. And to the lower, I would just sort of point to the lower plan where the two buildings are sort of pulled apart and that parking is underneath that. And that was done strategically so that, that courtyard would have light as much as possible during the course of the day, which we sort of did lots of shadow studies and really tried to demonstrate that we would make that a sun-filled space. Next. And this is an aerial view, a couple of aerial views around the perimeter now. This is from Seattle Street looking down over the proposal. Next. This is sort of overlooking the future park as if it had been completed, but you can sort of see how that linkage between the, the two buildings with a little bridge component, that's a kind of lobby area. It's kind of a bridge expression. It's really meant to be kind of almost like gate. And you can sort of see how we're connecting to the future park, which again is designed by others. But I think that our building provides a nice sort of backdrop to that park. And even the landscaping, the, the landscape firm that was just working on the park is sort of really reinforcing that edge and really trying to work in concert with what we're, we're doing. Uh, next. And the third slide is on Wyndham Street. There's a temporary parking which is sort of carved out. This was sort of asked by neighborhood to create drop off and moving and all of those sort of functions. Amazon and, I mean, deliveries and, and all, you know, food deliveries and all of that. They really wanted us to create a kind of a drop off. And again, so really here you can see that the scale of the sort of individual blocks, which are sort of linked together by recessed, in this case, metal panel, but really trying to stress that gabled roofs, three-story expression, mostly three-story expression, vertically oriented windows, horizontal siding. And then that real front, that little front garden, just as you see in the other houses that are around the neighborhood. A bigger building, yes, but really trying to express it as an assembly of smaller buildings. Next. And now just very quickly on the ground floor, so eye level. This is on Seattle Street, sort of approaching the, the building. Next. And then between the two sort of blocks, you can sort of walk through. There's a kind of pedestrian pathway within, leads to the courtyard to the right and then the main entry to the left. Next. And that's that view of the courtyard to the right. That's a covered lattice with the fire pit and seating area. And again, it's, 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 I think it's well, quite a bright sort of lively space and something hopefully, a nice social space for residents to gather. Next. And then this is turning, sort of turning around, looking at the main entry. And there's that sort of bridge component that I explained to you. And then to the left on the ground floor is a community room. That's for all the residents in the entire development. That's basically like a living room with television and, and dining area and so forth. So that's a, that's a, that's a use that's shared by all residents. Next. And then now I've sort of gone through that, that, underneath that gateway or through that gateway. And now I'm in the park looking back towards the development. Uh, next. And just as if we were going to the left and then now Wyndham Street is that sort of curving road into the back, you can see the Science Center, Harvard Science Center. I think that's the last view. Yeah, I think that's it. Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions from the board? Here are none. Can I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office had to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. This went through a BPA-led, an MOH-led community process involving a public meeting in January, before it was BPA board approved. During the community process, they engaged with a number of stakeholders, securing support from the Austin Civic Association, the Charles, Charlesview Apartments, as well as members of the Harvard-Alston Task Force. During those support letters, the common theme was appreciation for the deep affordability that's being proposed here, as well as the commitment to open space, pairing nicely with the continued redevelopment of Harvard-owned lands in Austin. That information will defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. More and then Camille.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Margaret Craig, I'm a member of the State Council of this project. She is appreciating obviously of the formerly restricted ownership units that will be included in this project. These are needed in the neighborhood. She'd also like to thank her best, all of the, the community outreach conducted throughout the process. She'd also like to say, you know, there is a great need for homeownership units, particularly in the Alston neighborhood. Only approximately 2% of housing units in Austin are, are occupied. And there are only approximately thirty, thirty incomer restricted homeownership units in Austin. So these are, you know, these ownership, incomer ship, ship units are greatly needed. Thank you.
Indis?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Indis Johnson. I'm the Director of Constituent Services for Counselor-at-Large Henry Santana. And we would like to go on record as supporting this project. And we mirror everything that Council of Redding has, has said. We are in huge support of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Camille?
Madam Chair, Commission members. My name is Camille Plata Costa. I'm the Project Manager at the Planning Department for the project. Very quickly, they filed their SPRA with us on October twenty-ninth of twenty-twenty-four. Public meeting as Connor Newman hosted was on January twenty-second of this year, after the comment period was extended. Comments surrounding car entry and exit on the site were heard and changed by the proponents to meet the needs of the community prior to our board approval on March thirteenth of this year. The project has received funding from the Mayor's Office of Housing as well for the project. And the Planning Department is in support of the project. Thank you.
And we have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, Attorney Feacham, may I make one addition? I have a letter of support from Council President Luigi Enz's office as well that supported the project.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to go through.
You have a second? Back in. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Luwah?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Otto? Yes. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. With them.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, we asked if there were any requests for the loss of deferrals earlier, but I do have a note that the next case has been deferred for administrative reasons.
Is this five, six? Are you talking about one twenty-two?
Saint Mary? One, uh, Saint Mary's Street, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So this is for case BOA one-seven-one-six-seven-five-three with the address of one forty-two to one forty-six Saint Mary's Street. With, if there's no one here to represent the case, then I make a motion to, to defer to July eighth for administration, administrative reason.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Luwah?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Otto?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair, thus the motion carries.
So with that, we'll move on to case BOA one-six-four-nine-four-six-zero with the address of five sixty-one to five seventy-nine Center Street. If the applicant and or their representative are present, if they please explain the case for the board.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Stembridge, and through to the members and Madam Chair. For the record, Richard Lins, an attorney with a business address in two forty-five Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner, Stamoato's Family Trust, with respect to five sixty-one Center Street. Madam Chair, this is a proposal to erect a new twelve-unit residential building with ground-level commercial space, parking for six vehicles and bike storage. This proposal will replace a decommissioned gas station that has sat vacant for close to ten years in this very prominent section of Center Street in Jamaica Plain. With respect to the project, based upon the city's requirements, there will be a total of two units out of the twelve that will be restricted under the inclusionary development policy for the City of Boston. And that would be two of the units that would be required and therefore would align with the city's requirements for designation of IDP units. The proposed project is for a rental, so we would continue to own and operate this building with professional management. And we do understand that the Planning Department has made a recommendation to support this or recommend, accrue this project, provided that we enter into an affordable agreement with Mayor's Office of Housing, that we eliminate a number of curb cuts along Center Street that were used with respect to the gas station, and then obviously repair the sidewalks and create improvements to the public realm and public space around our building. We've also provided the board a letter from the Jamaica Plain Center South Main Streets Group, which support the proposal. So Madam Ambassador, if we can jump down first to the, maybe slide four, that gives us a little bit of view here of. So he's sneaking here, let's see, here we go. So as you can see, this is the MFI District. Madam Chair, members of the board, MFR, multifamily residential. The proposed use for the residential component is allowed. So multifamily use is something that does not require any relief with respect to this application. As we can see in the site context, sort of screen somewhat right next to the roadway is the view of the gas station. The board can note that there are a number of multifamily structures around the immediate vicinity, including structures which we would submit our consistent in size, height and density of what we're proposing for this site. If we could jump down perhaps to the next slide, please? Just a different view perhaps, next slide? This is a good slide to start, we can jump back to the previous slide there. One back, please? Sure, we can continue. If you just go to the street view, that's fine. Okay, so this is, board can see the street view showing the location of where that gas station was. You can see the curb cut located here along Center Street that will be closed up in connection with this project. Next slide, please. Yeah, just in the interest of time, we could jump out of maybe slide twelve. That would be helpful as well. There we go. So let's start here with a survey. So what we can see here is the proposed footprint of our building that would eliminate the pre-existing remnants of the gas station and that our building would be set back pretty generously along the lot lines. As you can see, we have an eight-point-four-foot setback along the Lakeville roadside, at least a six-foot setback on Goodrich Road, and then a substantial setback along Center Street. Part of that will include a good amount of landscaping and buffering. We'll see that in the renderings in a moment. I will point out that there is a driveway located behind the building. That is that area identified as by Tuminus Concrete Driveway, which allows for access to the back portion of the garage area for the building, for the six parking spaces. There's also access to bike parking. There would be a separate curb kind of Lakeville roadside to allow for appropriate circulation of parking in and out of the back of the building area. If you go to the next slide, please? Uh, next slide, after this one? Uh, next slide, please? Okay, so if we can just zoom in here. Yeah, so the rendering that we're proposing, or at least the style of the building we're proposing, includes probably some of the higher quality materials than typically we see in projects around the city. We include an entire masonry front of the building and then a modified vantage roof to the top. And I'm sure as this board can see, the improvements would be dramatic and significant for essentially what is a smaller city block, a front edge of a smaller city block along Center Street. The amount of buffering and screening that we've added on-site creates, we, we do understand this is a corner lot in, in two spots, so the actual amount of open space would be likely limited. However, we add about fifteen hundred square feet of buffering around the building, which would include the landscape and vegetation that you can see on the site in these renderings. Next slide, please. We can skip over this, just floor plans, but I have a better view of the architectural site plan here. Perfect. So as you can see here, the six parking spaces that are accessed from that driveway to the rear, as well as the proposed buffering and vegetation around the building, our bike storage and our ground-level commercial space, which is located on the corner side of the building. One of the things I will add is that we do include a good amount of buffering along the back property line. So you see those trees that we are proposing along our edge with our neighbors to the rear. Next slide, please? Just a study here to show the relative height of our proposed building in relation to the surrounding context, surrounding neighborhood. As I mentioned in those earlier slides, the height of our building is pretty consistent with what we see in the surrounding context. Next slide, please? Just our floor plans, we can go back to those if there's any questions. Next slide, please? Next slide after that. And just shows our elevations. So real quickly, Madam Chair, and I know you have a lot of things on today, I just want to run through the violations that were cited. First of all, parking, we are proposing a total of six parking spaces. Under the code for that particular sub-district, a total of eighteen parking spaces would be required. We did hear different opinions during the community process, a very lengthy community process, I would add, that some wanted to see more parking, some wanted to see less parking. We feel that the total of six spaces is consistent with the Boston Transportation Department's recommendations for maximum parking ratios. We would be at a fifty percent ratio. Considering this is on a main street with access to public transit, we believe it aligns with the, the Boston Transportation Department's proposed recommendations for maximum parking. We also include the adequate number of bike parking spaces that would be sufficient for this building, including spaces that would allow for visitor bike parking as well. With respect to additional lot area which we recited for, because this was filed prior to October first of twenty-twenty-four, we could have easily reduced this to comply with that particular regulation for Jamaica Plain. However, that would reduce us down to nine units. As this was filed prior to October first, as I said, we would not be required to commit to any IDP as a result. We think the building design and the unit sizes that we're proposing are fairly consistent with the market demands in this area. And we think the addition of the two affordable housing units is a added bonus for this project that will certainly improve this area and get rid of this lighted former gas station. We also were cited for forbidden use for the ground-level commercial space. While we understand that the MFI District does not allow for ground-level commercial, we do believe is an appropriate and necessary use for a building like this. One, it, you know, certainly allows us to not require residential units on a lower level and we're not sacrificing activation as well. We don't want this portion of the building to just be limited to the lobby and some parking with bike storage. We think having ground-level activation with retail is a good use of this location and certainly consistent with other uses of the surrounding area. For height, a number of stories, we are proposing this is a four-story building. We again believe that is quite consistent with the surrounding context and certainly with future planning for new zoning that will likely take place in the coming years for this part of the city. We do want to note that we have actually reduced the height of the building from around forty-four feet to around forty feet in response to some of the comments that we did here through the community process. We're proposing no roof decks and no large headhouses or penthouse additions to this building, so we feel that we have adequately and certainly addressed the comments and concerns that we heard through the community process. We were also cited, Madam Chair, for rear yard. We are cited, based upon the understanding that the zoning code requires a minimum of twenty-foot setback in the rear. We are at fifteen feet, but I would point out that shallow lot exception does apply in Jamaica Plain and therefore we can reduce down to fifteen feet, so that actually is a compliant condition for this project. Our front yard that we were citing for, we can certainly address through a modal alignment through any Boston Planning Design Review. We believe that incorporating the buffered edge in front of our building with that landscaping and certain vegetation that we've shown is a, a good feature to include, especially based upon how much of a, of a block this building will occupy. So we believe that the experience that we're introducing, regardless of what the setback requirement is for modal, would be a, a much more aesthetically pleasing feature for this building. And last but not least is the open space. As I said, we do provide approximately fifteen hundred square feet around the building with all the vegetation and landscaping that we're adding. We certainly could comply with the open space requirement, but that would be at the detriment of the driveway that we're proposing to the rear to allow for the six parking spaces under the building. I appreciate the time, Madam Chair. I'll pause here and answer any questions to the board or take any comments.
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit more about your thoughts behind the commercial space versus, you know, whether it's more units versus parking or other, other use? Your, the commercial there would basically be the only commercial, like in either direction for several blocks? And so just kind of talking a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I, I think that in some of the conversations that we had, and we did have, as I said, multiple community meetings with different constituencies, we did hear that activation at the ground level was something that would be favorable, especially considering that, you know, putting a unit on a very busy section of Center Street would be probably not the most optimal use of that space. So having an additional dwelling at the ground level really would not add anything to the, I guess, the experience of living at that building. We do have an elevator in our building, so we're able to comply with any accessibility requirements for the units above the ground level. And we feel that that would certainly provide an opportunity for some type of activation at the ground level that wasn't residential.
Other questions from the board? Here are none. May I take a public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting facilitated on July eleventh. That was very well attended. Many abudders did voice support for the proposal, and while no opposition was voiced, a few concerns were raised with about a fifty-fifty split with the abudders about the removal of, the, their removal and amount of parking. Again, it appeared that half of the abudders were in favor and half of the abudders were not. This included curb cuts in the design and the facade of the building. Next, the applicant presented to the Jamaica Pond Association on September ninth and again on January sixth, where they voted to oppose the project. The proposal was again presented twice to the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council beginning in February, on February fifth. The first resulted in a vote to defer, the second with no changes to the proposal, resulted in a vote to deny. The concerns included density, lack of parking, and the height of the proposal. To date, our office has received two letters of support and five letters of opposition, with the opposed keeping in line with the concerns for parking, as it will eliminate three parking spaces. And again, the appearance for the character of the neighborhood and the size of the proposal, requesting that it be reduced from four floors to three floors. The opposed mentioned concerns for increased vehicle traffic and foot traffic in the area regarding the, again, the size of the proposal and commercial space. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Webber?
Yeah, thank you. I've, I've lived around the corner from this gas station for close to seventeen years now and it's been out of business for most of those years. And, and clearly something needs to be done on the site and we need housing. I, I, I'm dealing with, I think is a unique situation here though, where I have the JP Neighborhood Council, which is opposed, or the zoning committee is opposed to it, in part because of lack of communication, from what I'm told, and maybe Attorney Lins wants to address it, between the property owner and the, the committee. This is a property owner that owns a lot of property throughout our neighborhood and we need to have a good relationship between the owner and the community, because there are other lots that are probably going to be developed. And so while they're opposed to it, the main street is in support, including I think the JP Design Committee believes that this project is, is a good design. So, you know, I, I personally, I, I think the density is good. I think something needs to happen there very soon. I, my request would be that because of what I'm told is a, a, a lack of communication between the property owner and the JPNC, I would, I don't know if the committee even entertains motions like this to table until July fifteenth to allow them to have this discussion. And because we're all going to have to work together on a lot of different properties and I see Attorney Lins's hand is already up. But, so that, that is, that's just my proposal. I think we all need to work together. And, you know, obviously I'll leave it up to the experts on whether the design is good. Clearly there's some, you know, I, I, you know, disagreement, but I, you know, I will say I'm for, I'm for the density of the proposal and in principle, something going in there. I just would like the, the zoning committee and the Attorney Lins to at least have a chance to talk, if they have already. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and now we have Jerry. Sent a request on mute. Can you state your name and address and let us know if you're in support or opposition?
Yes, my name is Jerry Levitt. I, I represent the Lakeville Place Condominium. We are the director of butters at Eight Lakeville Road, Jamaica Plain. We are speaking in strong opposition to this proposal. The community doesn't want this project. It wants to see residential, but it doesn't want to see this particular proposal for many reasons. The, the Lakeville Place Condominium is the director butter. We support residential housing with conditions at this project site, but we do not support this proposal. During the review, we, we do not support the proposed office space that is proposed for the first floor. This is a residential, this is own residential, this is a residential community. This is a residential, this is own residential, this is a residential community. We support three floors of residential housing only and oppose all requested variances for this project. The background is during the review process with the Jamaica Pond Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. As Director Abutters, we voiced that our experience with the developer has been disappointing and frustrating, not only for us as Director Abutters, but also for Lakeville Road community, Goodrich Road and Center Street residents. The developer seems to have no interest in working with us as Director Abutters or with the surrounding community. We reached out many times to try to meet, and, you know, all we would get like months later is an email. That isn't communication. There was one meeting that happened in, I believe, August, August 12th, and no communication since, where we had raised a number of concerns, and we wanted to engage the Stomatos family and Attorney Lins in discussion. Nobody would return our calls, nobody would respond to us. This isn't a good neighbor, this is not a representative of a good neighbor.
Please we wrap up now.
I'm sorry?
Please wrap up here.
Yes, of course. I'm going to skip to my summary here. We support three stories of residential housing with conditions, but we do not support this proposal as submitted. We support three stories of residential housing with parking for its residents. We do not support four stories, all of the surrounding buildings in our residential neighborhood are all three stories. This proposal does not conform to the current zoning code, which the primary abutter and the community both oppose. We do not support the office space, which is an unzoned use, which does not conform to the current zoning code, which the primary abutter and the community both oppose, and there is no need for this office space in our residential neighborhood. We do not support the parking exit onto the Lakeville Road, which would eliminate three parking spaces from Lakeville Road, which is a one side of the street parking, very limited in our neighborhood, and our street is very congested with many condominiums on our street. We do not support any of the proposed variances. What we do support is good communication between the developer, the primary abutter, and neighborhood residents.
Thank you.
To have a good neighbor.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands? Richard Lins, are you looking at your own separate?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond. I wanted to respond.
David Libby, I just see a hand raised.
Yeah, I just want the comments to finish, and then we'll turn back to you.
Hello, my name is David Libby. I currently live at 176 School Street, though up until last year, I lived off of South Huntington Avenue near this project. I submitted written testimony by email this morning, if you would like to read that. But I did want to correct one misconception, that this is a completely residential neighborhood. This site is across the street from a gas station and three doors down from some restaurants in one direction to the south and to the north. Two blocks up, there are additional restaurants that are in the current, what is currently zoned as multifamily residential. I think it's clear from the ground that the zoning does not match reality of what this site is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no addition. Okay, Attorney Lins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to respond briefly to a couple of points that we heard. I thank the counsel for his comments. I think he certainly conveyed what the, I think, a little bit of a conundrum here is that you have this site that is underutilized, is late, you know, vacant for so many years. I know there's been other proposals trying to make something happen here. And unfortunately, the reason why nothing has really happened is because of the level of opposition that seems to always come about when this proposal gets put forth for this site. With respect to the confusion, or at least the lack of communication comments, I just want to be clear for the board, and I believe we had a total of seven community meetings on this. We were before Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council zoning subcommittee expecting a vote, we were asked to defer it for purposes of giving members more time. The comment that there were no changes made when we ultimately backed for our vote is simply because all of the changes we had made were already done. The changes that were being requested are the ones that we've already said we can't do, i.e. reducing this down to a three-story building, essentially making this as of right, avoiding all variances, and then a shopping list of other things that were put forth by the Lakeville Place Condominium. And unfortunately, you know, there were so many different points of view on opposition that it certainly seemed like there was a lot of opposition to the project, but there was a lot of individual opposition to specific things about the project. And we just weren't going to be able to address every one of them. We think the project we put forth is the best that we can do, and certainly in response to the comments that we heard. I do want to point out one other item, though, however, that was raised by Lakeville, that we were non-communicative, or certainly, you know, to suggest that we ignore them. That is not true. In fact, I do have email communications with Lakeville Condominium. We did meet with them separately and privately. They sent us a proposed abutters agreement. I know she indicated that we didn't respond after August. I have an email here, October 4th of 2024, which Office of Neighborhood Services is copied on, responding specifically to the request in their abutter agreement, where we agreed to most of it. We could not agree to all of it, and we asked for more details on one of the items. So to suggest that we were less than communicative, or we were ignoring abutters' concerns, sort of ignores reality here and the record in this case that, you know, is available to ONS. We have done as much outreach as we possibly can. At some point, we just can't keep going to community meetings and hearing the same thing. A project has to move forward, and that was the position we took, and that's why we're before the board today. I would remind the board that this is not only just a reuse of a site that is, you know, again, as we heard, is late vacant, but also will add two affordable housing units in connection with the proposal. We feel that the height, density, and certainly the way this fits with the surrounding context is quite consistent with what the planning objectives would be for the city, and we believe that's the reason why the Boston Planning Department has recommended approval of this project. So thank you again, Madam Chair, for all of these comments.
So I just have a quick comment. Mr. Lins, I know you're here representing your client, but typically, we do hear from the developer as well. Is your client on the call or available to speak to some of the comments that we have?
So Mr. Stomatos is here, and, you know, I appreciate, through the chair, Ms. Panato, I appreciate having, you know, direct questions to my client if it's about the project. I don't have a problem with that at all, and Mr. Stomatos, if you'd like to address the board on any particular questions or comments. And one thing I will point out, and we did hear this as well, Ms. Panato, is that, you know, there are other projects. That was a point of contention with the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council as to why we haven't started on another project, and that was stated on the record as a reason to oppose this project. I didn't think that was particularly fair. I understand that community groups can make whatever they want.
That's not my question.
Okay, sorry, yeah, all right, yeah.
I just wanted to hear, I just wanted to hear from you.
Yeah, he's available.
About communication, and, you know, he's the one going to be on the ground for next several years, working with neighbors.
Yep. Chris, are you able to unmute yourself? I don't need his on the call.
Let me get to unmute him. Go ahead, Chris.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, my name is Chris Stomatos, developer of this property, and I've owned this property for a couple of years now. We met, as my attorney mentioned, multiple times with the abutting association that owns the 8 Lakeville personally, and, you know, we tried to address multiple issues that they brought up, and I think that we addressed about 70% of the issues that they brought up. Their main issue was, of course, they didn't want the traffic coming out of, onto Lakeville, but as a planning for the site, we looked at, you know, multiple ways to look at how the parking could work, and the best solution we came, they would come in on Goodrich, exit on Lakeville, and that would be it. We added windows on the side of the building that they requested. We agreed to do some follow-up mediation during construction of the project with their building as well as ours. And obviously, you know, we have multiple other meetings that we did with other neighborhood groups and councils multiple times to appease everybody, to try to work with everybody. And of course, our family has been a lifelong resident of Jamaica Plain, and we're not looking to have any issues with any neighbors, of course. We try to work with everybody, we're trying to produce a quality project. As my attorney even mentioned, the project, as you can see here, we're proposing to build this with quality materials, more than we had to put in there, just because we're planning to keep the property as a long-term hold, and we'd like to have a property that we can look at and say, this is a great, you know, development that happened here for the future, for the neighborhood and for us, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval with the provisos with Design Review with Site Plan and Circulation, and that a housing agreement be executed with the Mayor's Office of Housing. I just want to explain my decision to support this. I agree with the Planning Department's assessment that none of the proposed dimensional conditions are out of balance with the neighborhood. I think the shape of the lot is unique, and it sort of fronts three different streets, or is surrounded by those three streets, and then I think it's an improvement from the prior condition of a gas station and vacant currently. So motion to approve for that.
For a second?
I can.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
No.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panato?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I'd like to just articulate a couple of points of that. I think the site design is good, making use of the unique lot, including the setback from the abutters. And I think I'd also note that many of those abutting multifamily buildings wouldn't also be allowed to be built under current zoning code, so I think this is a good fit for the site and the context, and that also having some commercial or office space there works. I think that there's not much locally there, because you don't have properties, you have properties that are stepped up from the street, but then you go down a block and you just start to have that, so this is a good infill to have some office space there at the ground floor. So yes, I approve.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Your turn.
Next, we have case BOA 1719485 with the address of 15 Conroy Crescent. If the applicant and/or the representative are present, they please explain.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Kyle Smith of Statera Law, with the business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Beck Bay. On the call with us as well today, I do have the current owner, who is himself a, you know, slightly well-known developer in this area, that occasionally has some projects, including this, which would be his most, I think, significant to date, but a, you know, kind of well-known developer to the larger West Roxbury, Rosendale, and JP community. The proposal before you today is to raise a existing single-family structure, and then effectively rebuild over the existing footprint a new, slightly larger, single-family structure, increasing the aggregate internal livable square footage by only about 480 square feet. The only proposed exacerbation to existing setbacks would be to make the left side of the garage slightly wider for the sake of permitting a two-bay car garage from the existing, arguably, single-bay car garage. So we have a slight additional bump out of the existing footprint on the left side only in the footprint of where the garage will be from current location orientation, making our left setback arguably about two feet worse. As I'll let the representative of ONS speak about, sorry, the Mayor's of Office of Neighborhood Services, we've had a lengthy community process, we've engaged with a number of abutters, we have provided to Stephanie Haynes a letter of support from our most immediate abutter. We have approval from the JHA and the JPNC as well, as they can speak as to, but a lengthy process. About this site in particular, there is some downslope from kind of grade at street level to the garage, followed further down to the base of the rear of the structure, and then following down beyond it to the back of the yard. There is an existing pool on site that hasn't seen use, and I can't tell you how long. There's active trees growing out of it. The intent is to remove that pool, regrade. Some of our concerns we heard were about what the site would look like during the process of excavation, demolition, rebuilding of foundation, removal of pool, et cetera, trying to mitigate what we perceive to be, you know, runoff coming downslope. Those will certainly be addressed by the owner, and we've discussed that at length, I think, with the community and the immediate abutters. If you go onsite and into this building, I can explain to you how or why, but over the course of time, there were additions that were done, I don't think pursuant to permit. There's about five inches of slope in the structure from front of structure on Conroy to the rear. There is significant structural insufficiency. The current proponent had no intent of raising the structure initially, but seeing the improperly built rear foundation to support the rear half of this home, which is single-story, it became readily apparent that the house would have to come down and the foundation rebuilt. The whole intent was to basically square off the structure, including incorporating into the rear a second floor, and that gets us our increase of about 480 square feet. You would not be able to rebuild any more weight over the existing rear part of the foundation, which was not built appropriately or correctly. There are many immediate abutters that have been on site that knew the prior seller, that can speak as to what the inside of this structure looks like as far as structural insufficiency and deficiencies. So we do have a laundry list, I think, of traditional setback issues and the like. I just would remind the board that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming footprint that we're building over, with the exception of a slight bump out to the left of the garage for an exacerbation of about two feet. And our main real change to the structure itself is to build a second floor addition over the current rear part of the structure, which is currently only one story, and that is our aggregate additional about 480 square feet. Current FAR is .55. The proposed FAR is .64, so we have an additional 480 square feet, and again, that is a delta of current existing versus proposed of .08. We are changing the roof pitch slightly from being more linear, running horizontally across the street, to a garage pitch this way, balance of house. We're just kind of changing the aesthetics of the building itself to kind of break up the roof line. But otherwise, I think this is a proposed project that is the result of necessity, given the structural insufficiencies and deficiencies of the whole back half of the foundation, and a community process that has been extensive and lengthy and has dealt with a proponent builder who, again, has a reputation to maintain, who's well-known to the community, who's done a very good job as far as I'm concerned of interfacing with the immediate abutters, the JHA and the JPNC, all of which we have votes of approval for. With that, I'm happy to turn it over to the board and the chair and the proponent to see if they have any comments, questions, and, again, as the proposed builder and the person who, as in our prior matter, will be involved in this process for the next year or so, I'm happy to turn it over to him in full confidence in him being able to answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on April 10th, where abutters raised concerns by issues such as building pool and a stream in the rear of the property, as well as water mitigation and construction vehicle congestion while building the property. One abutter pointed out that an affected abutter downslope from the proposal was away at the time, and an effort should be made to contact them before construction. Next, the proposal was presented to Jamaica Hills Association and Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, where they voted to support the proposal. Thank you for your time, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board for their judgment.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
And Madam Chairman?
Yes.
So the reference to butter who was not present is specifically one of the butters that we do have a MOU with and a vote of their non-opposition support, and that was well-known to the JHA, who ultimately voted to support. JPNC usually only hears matters after JHA has approved or had a chance to listen to the matter, so we have engaged that specifically reference to butter and have an MOU with them. And again, this was a lot about concerns of excavation, the removal of the pool, and water mitigation and runoff during construction.
Thank you. For that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
For a second? If I can.
Yeah.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Can I confirm if there's any provisos?
I think the Planning Department was looking for design review on this.
Okay. As this customer, I just wanted to confirm.
Would you like design review?
I just don't want to uh potentially bypass any steps, and we're confident in getting it, so happy to abide by the board's recommendation.
It's a single-family, I'm okay with it, if someone wants to add it, I'm also okay with that.
Does anyone want to add it, or are you fine?
I'll make it easy, I don't want it.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge, then we're all set.
All right, I'll sit.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, appreciate your time.
And with that, I believe Ms. Turner can confirm, but I believe she is, she needs to drop off, so we will become a six-member board.
Yeah, thank you so much, and have a good day.
Thank you. So we are, we will now be a six-member board for the duration of the hearing.
And next, we'll move on to case BOA 171 9499 with the address of 34 Cobden Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Dobson Road. And with me today is co-developer Robert Nichols. Today, we're here seeking relief to erect a three-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Here, the zoning sub-district is a 3F 4,000. Our lot size is approximately 3,600 square feet. The violations are, um, lot sufficient, lot size, um, again, it's 4,000, we have 3,600 square feet. Uh, FAR, required FAR here is uh point eight, and we are proposing 1.2. Side yard violation, the requirement is 10 feet, we have three. Um, and the rear yard violation, um, is, the requirement is 30 feet, and we have 19 feet. I can turn it over to Robert Nichols, if he can go through the plans, um, as they are presented in on the screen. Robert?
Excellent. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. If you could, uh, push it up to the next sheet there, so we can kind of see the the layouts. Thank you, Derek, for introducing the project and going through the violations. Um, next sheet, please, we can kind of see the layout. Is three bedrooms, two baths on each floor, uh, living space is about 1,400 square feet. We previously came before the board. Uh, one of the big changes we made, based on the feedback, was the ceiling height and the elevations. Uh, we were at seven feet because we tried to add garage parking at the first story. We have removed the parking, and now we have nine-foot finished height ceilings based on the current elevations. We're still under uh the maximum height for the street. And uh, we went through the process with the community. Uh, we did get some letters of support and non-opposition from abutters behind the building. Um, and uh, we have, you know, really worked our best to work with Garrison Trotter, they also did provide a letter of support uh for this project, uh, but if you have any further questions on the project, I'll turn it over to the board to uh let us know their feedback and thoughts on what we're proposing here today.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Benbury. I am the Roxbury Community Engage and Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting facilitated on March 24th, which was very lightly attended. One abutter voiced opposition, stating they do not like the proposal, while one abutter voiced support, stating there is a need for housing. Next, the proponent presented to Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, who also voted to support the proposal. To date, our office has received two letters of support, one of the two received from Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association, again, in support of the proposal. Thank you for your time, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
We have a few raised hands here. Um, Alicia, and then Nail. Can you state your name and address for the record, and let us know if you're in support or opposition? Send a request to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so my, Alicia Hayes, I live at, uh, 21 Cobden Street. Um, and I am, uh, in opposition to this project, um, with the elimination of the, uh, of the parking, the, the, um, the former plans. I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to to actually present. I'm in opposition because there are plenty of, um, I'm sorry, I'm distracted here, let me, let me, let me, let me.
Okay, so you're in opposition, yeah.
Yeah, I'm in opposition.
You have Nail?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, yes, um, I'm in opposition, I live at 22 Cobden Street. And I look at the six violations, which were discussed at the previous, you know, um, meeting. And those violations, to my understanding, have yet to be resolved. And as the violations, you know, from lot area insufficient, which is Article 50, Section 29, unusable, usable open space insufficient, lot width insufficient, side yard insufficient, floor area ratio excessive, off-street parking requirements. Um, so, if any, if none of those violations have been resolved, and if that was the reason why, you know, this property, the proposal was denied in the first place, I don't see why we're still talking about it, if those issues have not been resolved.
Thank you.
We have no additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, can I just respond?
Yes, please.
Again, for, you know, certification, that's why we come to the Board of Appeals, to seek relief from those violations. Again, it's a 3F zone, we're proposing a three, three-family dwelling. Um, the 3F 4,000, and we have approximately 3,600 square feet with regard to, um, the lot size. And again, the side yard, um, again, is 10 feet, and we are requesting or proposing a three, three-foot side yard setback on that side, so. And I'll, and I'll just end it with that.
Um, can I, can I just add one more thing? Um, in terms of the letters of support, they say they received, Garrison Trotter has not, doesn't have a single member of, of a resident of Cobden Street on their board, they have no jurisdiction over us. I don't know why they, they keep signing these letters and offering support for a neighborhood they don't even represent. And none of us are represented in that, in that neighborhood association. So I just want to make. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion of approval, I think, um, as the planning memo points out, um, this is a narrow lot, but the makeup of the neighborhood also has similarly, um, narrow lots that with similar deficiencies that are improved with residential uses, so I don't think this would be too out of context with what's already on the ground there, so approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. The first being case BOA 171 9023 with the address of 179 Westbrook Line Street. Along with that is case BOA 171 9017, also with an address of 179 Westbrook Line Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, hello, Mayor's Board, my name is Marcus Springer, uh, Springer Architects, 46 Walton Street, Boston, Mass. Uh, this is an amendment to the uh current permit of the project, adding a roof deck and access uh with, um, air conditioning condensers on the back. Um, if you go to the next slide, um, we had a, a butters meeting on April 15th. Uh, we also, uh, uh, formed a design of the roof deck with the self-end landmarks committee, uh, with onsite meetings, uh, uh, as well as, you know, erecting prototypes. It was passed on the February 6th hearing of the SELDC. Uh, if you go to the next slide, um, that's just the location from the abutters meeting. And if you go to the next slide, uh, that's just the refusal letter with the, um, roof structure of variances that we're seeking, and then the, the next slide. Um, it's within the Pilot Block Neighborhood Association. Um, we went back and forth with them, uh, with the presentation and the design. Uh, the deck did extend to the rear, we, uh, brought that back uh from the rear edge, so it's five foot two inches from the rear. But we did ha, left the condensers on the roof in that five-foot zone. Uh, we presented an elevation of that to one of the Pilot Block Neighborhood Association members, who, uh, was appreciative of the design and, um, thought it was fine. Um, if you go to the next slide. So this shows a section through the building, um, with the front of the building on Westbrook Line on the right-hand side of the page. Uh, you can see the front edge of the deck is, uh, set back uh a little, uh, little, it's nine foot 10 from the front edge. We, that also aligns with the other roof decks, uh, on the neighboring buildings. Um, and it was also confirmed with the sightlines with the SELDC onsite. Uh, then the staircase to the roof with the roof hatch, and you can see the pulled-back rear edge from the rear of the building with a condenser pad in that zone. Then if you go to the next slide, uh, this is the rear elevation. Um, the one on the right is, was the existing condition before construction. It had a significant air handling unit on the roof, which, um, we demolished, you know, we we completely renovated the entire house, all, all five floors. Uh, the elevation on the left is the one that we showed the Pilot Block members concealing the, um, the condensers on the back of the roof in the five-foot zone. If you go to the next slide. So that's kind of a blow-up of the plan of the roof deck itself. There'd be a gate to access the, uh, condensers to maintain them. Uh, and then it shows the front edge and the, the rear edge and the roof hatch. Uh, and then the next slide. This is a blow-up of the rear elevation with the railing concealing, uh, there, there are five condensers for the building systems of the house. Uh, and then the last slide. Oh, and thi, this is, uh, yeah, the last slide, this is just the email from the Pilot Block member. Um, you can see, he said, this is very helpful, I'm fine with his plan, it's much better than I expected, so. And that's it.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Seba Jones, Assistant Team, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 179 Westbrook Line Street, our office differs with the Board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, attended by about four community members. The feedback, uh, from this meeting was concern about the placement of the condensers on the property causing noise issues for the neighbors, as well as some concerns about the access door height on the roof. The proposal was also reviewed by the Pilot Block Neighborhood Association and had planned to meet on 31825, but as the developer had stated, they changed the five-foot roof setback requirement on the plans. The Association expressed appreciation regarding this plan's change and has not required the applicant to appear at a meeting. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs with the Board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everyone, for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
We have no raised hands at the minute.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, um, with the, the, and have the plans submitted to Landmark, so they sign off as well.
Is there a second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll move on to the rediscussion cases scheduled for 11:30. Uh, we'll stop by asking if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge.
Attorney Small?
Yes, the address is 155 R Princeton Street and 157 Princeton Street.
That, those are four companion cases, which are case BOA 167 7881 with the address of 155 R Princeton Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 162 2100, also with the address of 155 R Princeton Street. Then we have case BOA 167 7882, the address of 1 157 Princeton Street. And finally, case BOA 167 7886, also with the address of 157 Princeton, Princeton Street. Would you go ahead and explain?
For the record, for the record, Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 51 Dobson Road. Yes, and these, it was an, um, error in the advertisement, and so these, administratively, these projects, this project has to be re-advertised. And I was told by, um, the zoning Board of Appeals Office that we were going to be scheduled for July the 29th, I believe.
Okay. Then with that, um, I'll make a motion that these cases be deferred till July 29th.
Second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, see you then, have a good day.
Mr. Stenbridge, I have another deferral as well.
Uh, and which one would that be?
Uh, that's the first, uh, rediscussion on the list, 1 Waverly BOA 16981.
Let Mr. Stenbridge read that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so that will be for case BOA 1698184 with the address of 1 Waitmore Street. Could you go ahead and explain?
Uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. Timothy Fraser from the law firm, Dane Torby, 175 Federal Street. Um, this matter also needed to be re-advertized, I believe it actually has been re-advertized for July 8th. Um, so requesting a deferral to that date.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to defer this case to July 8th?
Second? Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Enjoy your holiday.
Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, Richard Linds, uh, for 87 Morris Street.
Thank you, Attorney Linds, so that would be for case BOA 148 2368 with the address of 87 Morris Street. Go ahead and turn, Linds.
Thank you, for the record, uh, Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, uh, requesting a deferral. I believe we still have some outstanding items with respect to G-Cod, uh, and a few other matters, so we would need a, a brief deferral end of July, preferably.
So with that, what we have available would be July 29th?
Works for me.
Okay, may I have a motion? Sorry, you have to read it.
Oh, that, that.
That would help.
Good, good idea. These two cases are case, first is case BOA 148-23-68 with the address of 87 Morris Street. And along with that, we have case BOA 148-23-74, also with the address of 87 Morris Street. And with that, I'll make a motion to defer these cases until July 29th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Also, Mr. Stenbridge, 118 Princeton Street?
Princeton Street, which would be case, is case BOA 157-55-84 with the address of 81 Lexington Street. Go ahead, Attorney Linds.
Thank you. Richard Linds, again, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of petitioner Allison McHale. We are requesting administrative deferral on this, preferably same date in July, assuming you have, I know it's hard to tell at this point, but looking for seven number four.
Definitely hard to tell.
Yeah, I just don't.
I'm informed, we still, we have the date of July 29th available also.
Perfect.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case until July 29th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I know it's 12:20, just to save everybody some time. I think you have three interpretation cases on per 12 p.m.
You do, and they're all yours.
Yes, they are. They'll all be deferred. I believe we're just about there with ISD on the addressing all of the violations that we discussed. I know I've seen some email traffic this morning. So if we could just take a short deferral on those, we may just be withdrawing those, which is keep them on the docket.
Mr. Stenbridge, you want to read those into the record? We are past the 12:00 mark.
Yeah. First, we have Kate. The interpretation is scheduled for 12 p.m. The referrals are for, requested deferrals are for Kate. And the one, case BOA 170-44-40 with the address of 944 Saratoga Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 168-97-94 with the address of 62 to 66 Congo Street. And finally, we have case BOA 168-52-96 with the address of 265 to 269 Maverick Street. Again, Attorney Linds?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioners, and all three of the matters that Mr. Stenbridge just read. Madam Chair, these are all Article 80 projects, and these are all intended to be as of right, because the board is aware, we were before the board on interpretation of certain violations that were cited by ISD. We believe that we are close, if not there, in getting ISD to agree with our interpretation. We just would like that to be finalized in their updated refusal letters and would leave these on the docket until such time as that's happened. So if we can take a brief deferral on those, that would be great.
Okay.
Again, we'll look to move them to the, to July 29th?
Works for me.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer these three cases to July 29th?
Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you.
So with that, we'll return to the discussion scheduled for 11:30. And we have, excuse me, we have case BOA 168-51-49 with the address of 31 Notre Dame Street. This is an Article 80 case. So if the applicant handler that represented the president, please explain to the board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Marancy, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. I just want to correct, Mr. Stenbridge, I know you read it to the record. I believe that was just a typo error of putting Article 80. This, this project was a straight zoning proposal. There was no Article 80 process in there. With that being said, joining me today, owner joining us is Roy Yun, as well as the project architect, Tim Johnson. This is a proposal to combine two lots, raise the existing structure, and erect a new four-story, 14-unit residential building. This new parcel consists of 4,551 square feet. The property is located in a multifamily sub-district in Roxbury, one block away from Columbus Avenue, and within one half-mile of the Stony Brook MBTA Orange Line Station, and another half-mile from the Jackson Square train station. The surrounding properties are a mix of residential units and vacant lots. 24 Notre Dame Street, which is directly across the street from this parcel, was recently approved by this board for 26 units. There are also many other larger-sized projects within several blocks of this site. The erection of a multifamily residential building is in line with the planning goals of 2030 to increase the city's housing stock. The applicant, the applicant understands the need to create more affordable housing opportunities and is required to provide 17% of the units as affordable. But he has committed to an increased percentage of approximately 30%, offering four units as affordable. This proposal will consist of all one-bedrooms, ranging from approximately 518 square feet to 586 square feet. Each unit will have a balcony of approximately 47 square feet. If I can just, Madam Ambassador, can I direct your attention to go to page A02, please? Right there, back, back one. There you go. Thank you. Page A02, ground floor will consist of units one and two in the front. Building will have a shared amenity space in the rear, along with a storage, trash room, and a dedicated bike room for 14 spaces. Page A03, please. This will consist of the second floor, units three through six. Page A4 will be the third floor, which will consist of units seven through 10. And page A05 will be the fourth floor, which will consist of units 11 through 14. We have violations for lot area insufficient. The requirement in this sub-district is 4,000 square feet, and our combined lot size is over 4,000 square feet. Therefore, this violation should not have been cited. However, the additional lot size violation is accurate, as the code calls for 1,000 square feet of additional lot for each unit after the first three. We have a floor area ratio violation. We're proposing a 2.2 and a 1.0 as compliant. The proposed density does align with some of the other recently approved projects in this neighborhood. We have a usable open space insufficiency. Code requires 200 square feet per dwelling, and this proposal contains approximately 172 square feet per dwelling. We do have a side yard violation. Code requires a 10-foot side yard setback, and this proposal calls for eight feet on the right-hand side and five feet on the left-hand side. This type of setback is very similar to that of the other setbacks within this neighborhood. Lastly, we have a parking insufficiency. Code requires one space per unit, and this proposal doesn't provide any spaces, but is aligned with the initiative reducing dependency on private vehicles. Further, we feel it is appropriate, given the secured bike parking within the building, the proximity to rapid transit stations, and one block away from Columbus Avenue bus lanes. With that being said, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an Butters meeting facilitated on February 18th, where Butters voiced many concerns regarding flooding in the area, plans for water runoff, density, and parking concerns. And Butters also mentioned the property was meant to remain a green space, as outlined in the deed restriction, and two Butters voiced support for the proposal. Next, the proposal was presented to the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association on March 10th, where the proposal was opposed. To date, our office has received eight letters of support and three letters of proposition, one from the Eggleston Square Neighborhood Association, and wrote a letter with several concerns, including the building's lack of elevator and non-compliance with ADA, only offering one-bedroom units for management of existing buildings and setbacks are violations. Thank you for your time, and the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you. Any other reasons? We have no raised hand at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
Can the board just address ADA accessibility? This also was in the planning department's recommendation.
Yeah, that's, so I guess there could be, due to the step-up. However, those issues of accessibility can be addressed during the design review phase, if approved.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve with a housing agreement being issued prior to permits and that the plans be submitted to, for design review with attention to the accessibility of the ground floor.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Are you ready? Okay, Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And next, we have case BOA 166-34-21 with the address of 869 Saratoga Street. If the applicant to enter the representor present, they can please explain to the board.
We have a raised hand here, Michael. I'm going to send a request to make you a panelist. Can you press accept and then unmute yourself? Eric, do the same for you as well. Can you hear us?
Yes. Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Welsh. My office address is 501 Congress Street, Boston 02210, here representing the owner of the property, Mo Seifi, and for this proposed project at 869 Saratoga Street, which is a proposed three-family, a four-story, three-family dwelling that would be replacing the existing dilapidated, single-family house that's currently on the lot. This came before the board last month, I believe it was on May 6th, and we were granted a continuance because the BPDA memo that the board had before was, I think, incorrect. It was referencing a different project. So that's essentially what we're here for. And I don't know if you'd like me to redo, go over the full presentation again, or if there are any specific questions after reviewing the correct BPDA memo for the project.
I mean, I guess maybe address the fact that you chose not to adhere to Plan East Boston in your approach?
Sure, so the permit, the, the permit application was submitted out of pride to the implementation of the Plan East Boston. So when we were designing it, we did try to design it, you know, based on the guidelines and the, and the changes that were being discussed, but they weren't implemented yet. So we were sort of in a gray area of trying to guess and, you know, get as close as we could. But, so that's kind of the reason for that. What I did, I did put together just a table that sort of explains the variances that are required under the prior code versus the new one. And the, I can go through them, but the bottom line is under the former code, which is representative of the refusal letter. We require, that would require nine variances. Under, if, under today's code, there would only be four variances required. And one of them is, is the height variance. And I will say that, I'm not sure. So directly across the street and directly behind this property are EBR four districts. I'm not sure exactly if, what the, the proposed zoning map was at the time that we were designing it, but I will say that, you know, four stories would be allowed if we were, you know, either on the other side of the street or one lot back. So it's not, it wouldn't be completely out of, out of sync with the East Boston Plans Code as far as the height requirement goes, due to the location. And then the, so, I mean, that's the, the only other ones that would remain would be height, side yard, rear yard, and the related, as I said, lot coverage and permeability requirements under Plan East Boston. And one of the other, just to go back to the height requirement, is in a flood zone, and their lot's only 25 feet wide. So there's, there's a small lobby for, to access the building on the ground floor, and the rest of it is basically a driveway to the rear and one parking space underneath. So that's partially to, you know, keep it elevated for potential flooding purposes and also to provide off-street parking, which we, you know, assume, and from speaking with neighbors, we want to take up less off-street parking if possible. Under the new, the new code, what you could build by right is a three-story, three-family dwelling with no parking spaces. And so it's not as if, you know, nothing could be built here, but, but this is something that I think is a little bit more of a compromise that neighbors might like, at least the ones who have expressed that they want some off-street, off-street parking. And I'll, I'll mention that we're showing a 10-foot curb cut. I know that there was a, at the last hearing, there was a representative of the Boston Transportation Department who recommended removing one of the parking spaces. And he also, I think he suggested that the curb cut would have to be 20 feet. We're okay with, and we discussed potentially having a proviso of eliminating one of the parking spaces. And we would, we would be okay with that, especially if you, so if you look at the ground floor, there's the underground, the parking space that's under the building. Eliminating that would allow some more maneuverability. So I think that that might be appropriate to allow cars to be able to sort of do a three-point turn and pull out streets instead of having to back out of the garage door there. And regarding the side yard violations, if the, if the buildings on the adjacent lots had been directly up against those lot lines, then we would, there would be no side yard violation, because they could be attached. The, those, they're just, they just happen to be about, you know, one to one and a half feet off of their lot lines. So as far as the, you know, looking forward and what, what could be developed in the future, if those properties are redeveloped at some point, then they would, they, you know, be allowed to go right up to our building, and then that would essentially potentially eliminate that violation at some point in the future. But with that, I, I'll just leave it to the members of the board and see, open it up for any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. We'll take public testimony. Is there public testimony? Jessica?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services regarding eight sixty-nine Saratoga Street. Our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abudders meeting on Tuesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, which was attended by two constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was some concerns about neighborhood parking, construction vehicles, and the setbacks being requested by the applicant. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Association, which convened in opposition on the proposal regarding zero in favor and ten opposed for the vote. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment on this matter. Thank you, everybody, for your time and consideration.
Ellie. Good evening, members of board and chair. Ellie Sanchez with Councilor Coletta's about this office here. At this time, the councilor would like to go on the record in opposition of this proposal. Thank you.
So we have no additional raised hands. Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, could the applicant talk about the retaining walls in the rear yard? They look to be about five to six feet. So you're building up the grade back there?
The retaining, there's a retaining wall adjacent to, so the, the property slopes down from eight sixty-seven to eight sixty-nine, yes, downhill that way. There is a retaining wall that's there. And yes, it is about five feet high. There might be some fill, but this project will also have to go through the Conservation Committee, so all those, the drainage issues, things like that will be kind of subject to going through that process. So, but yes, the retaining wall would have to be repaired. And, but yes, there will be, there'll be additional drainage because right now there's no, there's no onsite, you know, dry wells or anything of that nature. So as per the standard practice, we will have, we will be putting in at least one dry well depending on what the engineering reports come out with during the conservation review process, potentially more than that, but we will definitely be improving the drainage system situation there. And also, we'll have to review the existing retaining wall, the structure of it and things of that nature. But that, that retaining wall is actually, it was installed as part of the construction of the building on eight sixty-seven Saratoga Street. So it's sort of encroaching onto this property, but not owned by the owner of eight sixty-nine Saratoga Street. So that's something that we'll have to work out through that process.
Okay, yeah, it looks like the wall along the right property line needs to be replaced, but then you're constructing a new retaining wall around the perimeter where the building ends. So. So not all of it is replaced, some of it is new?
Yes, the, is there, I'm just looking at it right now. Yeah. So that's the existing, yeah, yeah, right. So some of it was existing, and then some of it will be new. So basically, the, the, the foundation wall for the new structure will be the retaining wall on that side up until the, where the existing retaining wall is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
And you said this was, this was filed before the new East Boston planning came out?
Yeah, it was in April of two thousand twenty-four.
This, you're answering?
April eleventh.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff Anton, City of Boston Planning Department. Even though it was submitted in April of two thousand twenty-four, the legal notice for the public hearing before the zoning commission was April first, so everything would have been frozen and would have been reviewed under the, under the new zoning, which, if you look at the refusal letter from ISD, even though it does say three F two thousand, that's a misprint because a lot of the provisions that they cited are under the new zoning, like permeable lot area and building depth, building lot coverage, those are all new zoning requirements under the new Article fifty-three, not the old. So ISD did review this under the new zoning because the legal notice for the public hearing before the zoning commission was April first. And so I believe that ISD did cite this under the right code.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion for denial. I think that new construction projects, as we just heard, should comply with the new dimensional requirements of Plan East Boston.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenberg.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes, I don't follow the, the need for the, this to be the minimum relief here. That's needed for the project under the new code, so, yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Happy Fourth, everyone, I guess. Happy Fourth. I will not see some of you until after. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.